Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In our inspirational word for the day, Jesus said, "God blesses those who work for peace, for they will be called the children of God." And Commissioner Kaloe has our dog today.
Come here. Come here. You're gonna take a picture. Look that way. Look at Whitney. There you go. Our featured dog this week is about a year old female boxer mix. She's got a great temperament, extremely friendly.
Your microphone's not on, Ted. Getting yelled at.
It's not on?
No.
It's only been 12 years. You'll figure it out some later.
You know what? It's turned on.
It is. And I had it. It might have went out.
It should be a decent equipment. Yeah, that isn't working.
It was on, so it might have died. Okay.
Okay. We ready now? Our featured dog this week is about a year old female boxer mix. She's got a great temperament. She's available for adoption tomorrow, on Thursday, August 4th. We have 27 dogs right now, so stop by and see if you can find a new friend for your family. Come on, girl.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So move.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Preparations?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I'd like to see if we can hold off for now on, let's see, Requisition 1004. That's the unpaid NOACCA dues. Wanted to check with our Administrator here on what's taking place. Obviously, we're a member of the Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, and I want to thank Commissioner Kaloe, who's been the President of that organization in the past. He's done a great job down there, making sure that our projects are getting done and money's coming back to Lorraine County. This is the Metropolitan Planning Organization that makes it possible for the dispersment of funds for the various projects. And obviously, we're a growing county, so increasing the performance of our roads and highways is very critical. We have to pay dues to be a member of NOACCA, and I'm just a little concerned here that we still have some members of the county who are unpaid. From what I can see, I think we have five townships and two villages. First, I want to thank all the township cities and villages who have paid their dues, but trying to figure out why we're not seeing payment from these five townships and a couple of the villages.
Well, this is not a recent issue. Actually, it's been ongoing with some of them for a couple of years. I want to go back all the way to maybe 2000, when it was decided on a formula how these bills would be paid and distributed around the community. The municipalities have a representative that goes into NOACCA. The engineer has representatives, Commissions has representatives, Townships have representatives. But the NOACCA organization is actually formed by the county commissioners, and they actually can decide how to constitute their membership to NOACCA. But a long time ago, we reached out to all of those organizations and allowed them to appoint a member to go, because they were receiving funds, and they all agreed to help pay for the NOACCA bill for the area, which, as you know, brings millions and millions and millions of dollars into our community. We changed the formula a bit a couple of years ago, because it really wasn't representational of the population at large. We decided to use census data at one time to try to do a per capita head. Some people like to change, some people didn't. Then we tried to do it on the local government distribution fund, what percentage they got there, and some people liked that, and other people didn't like that. There's really been no way that everybody liked the outcome completely. And a few people felt that they weren't getting sufficient value from paying dues into NOACCA, and decided they weren't going to pay anymore. I will tell you that, at the end of the day, the bill is a liability of the county, and it's a liability of ours. For a long, long time, we had that collaborative relationship, because it brings millions, not just to the county, but into the cities and into the townships. Most of the townships, some haven't enjoyed as much success, but they still connect on county roads, state routes, work that needs to be done, and those roads all need to be repaired. And clearly, if you live at the southern end of the county and you're going to the northern end of the county, you've got to drive on those roads. So whether they fall into a different community, your community, they have to be maintained and repaired and taken care of. I have had communication periodically with those that have not seen fit to make their payment. I haven't gained a lot of cooperation. I can go back and do it again. I will say, I think I was the one that put that PO in to clean up our payment with NOACCA.
Well, I ders it on, Jim, because it is our responsibility, and, you know, NOACCA as an organization brings millions and millions of dollars here. Think about Elyria 57, think about all the road bridge replacements in our townships, State Route 20, Lear Road, I mean, Route 57 in Lorraine. I mean, it brings a lot. So, I mean, it still falls on our bill, a county liability.
It does, and also, let me speak to, it also brings transit dollars here. They assist us with transit dollars. We just got $100,000 grant vis a vis them working with us to gain that $100,000 for the lakefront work and also for transit study going forward. It's a good investment. And quite frankly, before anybody out there gets really disturbed why we're giving NOACCA money, they're our MPO. We have to be part of an MPO or we cannot access federal funds. So let's put that to rest right away, because there's going to be somebody that's going to come out and say, "Well, why are you guys with them anyway? They're just one big consulting group, and you're paying them taxpayers' dollars." No, we're not. Federal law requires you to be part of an MPO.
Correct.
And so I hope that we squash that right at the beginning. We had some issues with NOACCA years ago. I think a lot of them have been straightened out due to your work, Commissioner Kaloe, with them. We got a better voice in the mix, and we've been getting a better return on dollars from the federal government. We talked about leaving this MPO and going to another MPO several years back, but it makes more sense for us to be part of the Northeast Ohio Region MPO, as long as we get the respect we do at the table from the players, because there is some large players at that table.
The organization has changed. It's doing very well, though, at this point. People are working together.
I think Grace Sculitchy does a good job.
And from our standpoint, the county decided what the division was going to be in regards to, that's not a NOACCA rule, the county made those decisions. The townships have a seat on the board. Heidecker currently serves for the County Township Association. And it was everybody in the pool for a better Lorraine County. For a couple thousand dollars, it's still our bill. I'm not happy they're missing participating.
Let me explain a fear, though. And since we're voicing some concerns over the whole issue, I think we need to go down that road a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, if we start paying everybody else's bills, why would anybody else want to pay?
Did you read my [inaudible] this morning?
I mean, that's the...
You pay one, you're going to end up paying all of them. I know that, you know, time and time again, we haven't paid those small past-due bills. I mean, one entity has a $28 bill each year. It's not as if we're talking about massive funds. This is more a defiance than it is an economic issue. If it was an economic issue and an inability to pay, I think we would have different conversation with regard to how we support the community. I don't think this is an inability to pay. I just think it's some backlash over not wanting to.
I think it's important to stress that, you know, all of these communities benefit. Your residents do not stay in their homes. They actually use the roads, the highways in the area, to access commerce, to go to work. So when road projects are done in this area, anybody who lives in this county benefits from those. Also, they, NOACCA oversees these facility planning areas as well, too.
Well, actually, you're right. You know, sewers, stormwater, a lot of it goes through there. EPA issues that we have to work with EPA go through there. They have a fairly comprehensive umbrella that we work under. But at the end of the day, the dues got to be paid. If you want to hold it, I'll go back and once again, try to have dialogue with those jurisdictions that have not remitted payment. I will tell you that I'm not overly confident, but I certainly have banged my head against the wall before on issues, and I'm more than willing to do it again. But the difficulty is that we've given a voice to all of these communities vis a vis their associations to be part of the process at the table. And it's really disturbing that they'll send a representative to the table, but they won't police their own group to make sure payment's made.
And plus, NOACCA recently added, is it the Township Advisory?
Rural.
Rural.
We added a Business Advisory and a Rural Advisory.
So, you know, I think that NOACCA has done a lot to reach out, and I just want to commend my colleagues for, you know, having an appointment at the table with the Township Association to make sure that they're represented as well, too. And I'm just a big believer in being a good neighbor, you know? I think you pay your taxes, and you hope that your neighbor pays their taxes, too. And, you know, it certainly isn't fair when folks are being a good neighbor and they're paying their dues, but some choose not to pay their dues, and I don't think that's necessarily fair to them as well, too. And, I mean, just so you know, we're talking about amounts of, the highest is $949. $276, $275, $243, $123, $260, and one as low as $28. And there's an unpaid bill that goes all the way back to 2013 that's for $64. So I don't want anybody to think we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars here. I think that's a pretty reasonable investment to make. You know, we've seen some, a lot of good projects come to our county, and I noticed one of the communities that hadn't paid, there was actually a project recently approved in their area for $376,000. So how you can make any claim that you don't see any benefit is beyond me, but I think it's an issue of fairness. And I also don't think it's fair to taxpayers for taxpayers to have to pick up the tab for something that should be...
Well, they're ultimately going to pick up the tab.
Yeah, they're ultimately going to pick it up. It's what pool money it comes from.
Well, I'm going to let it look at for another month on this, but we've still got to settle a bar bill, because just to have it hanging out there doesn't make it a very good look for the county as a whole.
And just so everyone knows, and you know this, Ted, that, you know, the only community that hasn't paid, other than some of our townships and villages in the county, is the city of East Cleveland. They have an unpaid bill of $2,300. We all know what kind of shape the city of East Cleveland is in right now. I guess that's understandable. But other than that, Lorraine County, unfortunately, when we go to the meetings, we're the ones in the room that still have people not paying, and that's unfortunate.
Since you're talking about the non-pays, let's talk about the counties that are in this, Medina, Geoga, Lake, Cuyahoga, and Lorraine.
Correct.
So outside of East Cleveland, out of all those communities, every other community has paid. Now, I don't know what the distribution formula is in those communities.
Everybody does it a little bit different. Lake County has a split with the County of Lake Tran and, I believe, the two major cities. Yeah, what's it say there?
Engineers. Yeah, Lake County, it's the county commissioners, the county engineer in Lake Tran.
Right. And Geoga County?
Geoga County, the commissioners, the engineer, and the sanitary engineer. And then Cuyahoga County basically has all the communities contributing.
So, I mean, everybody has their own equitable split up. Medina pays it in full, the county commissioners pay it in full.
Exactly. But this was an agreement to...
Right. Well, I believe, in talking to Betty in the past, because Betty was on there for so long, was dividing up the seats that everybody had representation on this board. So you had the major cities, you had the county, you had our county engineer because of the roads and bridges and sewer issues, and then we had township representation also to bring everybody to the table, because it affects the whole county, and there was a distribution decided on back. And then, as we changed it, the original resolution, I think, was based on a population base, but wasn't updated as regularly as it should have been. So there were some communities who came up, you know, a little bit heavier than what they had in the past, because of shift of population.
Well, and let's also point out that everybody in every community received additional funds when the local government distribution went from 50% to the county to 30%. That 20% was dispersed over all of the other jurisdictions in Lorraine County. So they received more money. So back, you know, before that was decided, back, actually originally, when we were paying the bill, you know, more of the money went out to the political jurisdictions in Lorraine County in 2007 was the first year of distribution. And so we're not asking a great deal for a few bucks here, to a few dollars, to pay this bill.
Well, let's be honest, most of our communities are right there at the table with us. They're paying their bills. It's just these few who are choosing not to.
Well, Dick Heidecker is our representative on NOACCA. Should we ask him if this should maybe go just through the Township Association? One bill to the Township Association, let them decide?
Well, you know, I had recommended that some time back, that we send it to them and let them figure out how to deal with it, if they want a seat at the table, since we, when I say "we," you, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners has designated them to designate a representative to fill the county seat. If we're going to go that route, I would actually communicate with the President of the Association, rather than Mr. Heidecker.
Because I think these few communities are just, have their heels dug in, and they're, you know, I'd rather be happy than right. I mean, of course, it's fair the way it is, but if they're not going to pay, they're not going to pay. It's $28. It's not, you know, beating our head against the wall for $28.
It's $2,100 total.
I know, but for one community, it's $28. So it's not a matter of not being able to pay, it's a matter of not wanting to pay.
I got to tell you, Dick Heidecker has been doing an amazing job with NOACCA.
He's a good trustee.
He's done a great job on that board.
Yeah. The members will tell you that the folks in the other counties will say, "Wow, this guy's really engaged, he's very active." And so you couldn't ask for a better representative representing the townships and the rural...
So why don't we look to him, Ben?
And Carl's going to be on the rural group.
Yes, Carl is.
Carl's pretty active, too. So we have some good representation.
Okay.
And then he's the trustee from Grafton Township. I can certainly do that, Commissioner Kokoski. I can communicate either independently with these jurisdictions or vis a vis the Association. That's the Board's choice, right? But I will need a direction now on that.
Through the Association, it's fine. We still have two munis in there that have to be taken care of.
Well, but we also allow the City Mayor's Manager Association to designate their representatives. So I think if we go to the Township Association, we should go through the Municipal Managers' Mayor's Association. And we can certainly do that. And before it gets any more heated, let's see what that produces.
Yeah, I think it's, like I said, I think it's a reasonable request. I think there is a value here, and it's about being a good neighbor.
It's about being a good collaborator.
Right, collaborator.
I'll second Commissioner Lundey's motion to pull that one.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Travel?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet from employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
That would be Administrator Cordezic.
I have just a couple of potential highs at the collection center. Children and family first should take 15, 20 minutes. And I don't have my other folders. I don't think there's much else. So I'm just going to stay with personnel issues this morning. It's allowable discussion under Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting, we go into executive session and talk about those potential highs. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of July 20th and 27th?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Children and Families, approve an internal purchase service contract, Pegasus Transit LLC, Amherst, for transportation services for clients of Children and Family Council on an as-needed basis for fiscal year '17, effective retroactive to July 1st, 2016 through June 30, 2017, at a cost of $2.70 per mile, not two seat, $1,500.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Port Authority, internal lease with Lorraine County Port Authority on behalf of Solid Waste for 540 South Abbey Road, Elyria, Unit 2 and 3 of the DIY condominium, for $13,600 square feet, effective retroactive to May 1st, 2016 through January 31st, 2026, at a annual cost of $40,800.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Do you want to have any conversation on what's going on out there?
Sure.
The, this is the much anticipated expansion of the Collection Center. As you know, it's been a resounding success with our Collection Center. It's become a bit of a model around the state, but we had to modify our plans at the time for how we wanted to access and exit the facility because of some restrictions. We didn't own part of the building at the time. With these modifications, you'll be able to enter the back, there'll be a long corridor with a gentle turn, and you'll be able to exit through what is currently the front of the building, two doors up there. Right now, the turn is such a sharp turn when you go through, that the bigger vehicles ultimately end up having to back up a little bit to finish the turn. It's been awkward, but people still appreciate the center, and it's still, the amount of volume that goes through there is absolutely stunning. Also, with putting that turn corridor in, we'll also be installing some permanent training rooms with some static displays and also some dynamic displays that can be changing, so that we could have these schools come to us. Right now, we go out to the schools a lot, but we're hoping that they'll come and visit us more in that environment, learn about recycling. The key is to get people engaged early on in life to those things. We do have a great outreach program. This will extend that. It'll also enhance the ability for consumers to have a better quality experience while they're at the Collection Center, and also improve the building out there as a good neighbor, because there'll be some additional greening of some of the space and painting and repair of the area. Corridors growing out there, we need to be part of that growth and look responsible. The second phase of this will also be looking at a new building on the property to house the shred truck. Right now, it's, I think Keith's got about a quarter inch to get under the door, to get it inside the building. We talked about flattening the tires, just to get it in the building. So there'll be a second phase coming, but I want to get this first phase underway. It's been a bit of a delay. I thought this would be moving already. I know you're smiling, Commissioner Kaloe. You asked me if you were going to still be in office when we get this done, but I think we're underway here, and this lease is all part of that now, so we can begin the process. It's a really nice area out there, and I think people understand where to go. Keith's here. We're excessive, what, 50,000, 75,000 visits now?
10,000 just a couple of years ago. I don't think it was 50 or 60.
Yeah, Mr. Bailey?
Keith Bailey, Director of Solid Waste. What was your question, Jim?
What do we have, about 50,000 visits?
We're over 50,000 visits.
I thought so.
She gave the 50,000th award out a couple of years ago. It's been almost two years. We're up to...
I thought that was 10,000.
Yeah, we did that one, and then we did a 50,000 one.
We did a 50,000, too?
Yes, ma'am.
It's way up there. There's a lot, a lot of visits, a lot of traffic.
I want to commend you. I went last Wednesday to check out the demonstration of the shred truck. It's a pretty cool piece of machinery, but before that, I walked through the facility, and instead of filling out a card that you're from Lorraine County, blah, 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 now they just swipe their driver's license, and we can, you know, tabulate how many people are coming through and have, you know, some information on Lorraine County residents that are utilizing the facility. And then I got to see the little machine, if you want to expound on that.
About to make the socks?
Yeah, they fill the socks up with really nice compost dirt for people to do gardening, and they give away a water bucket, some seeds and stuff on Friday.
Yeah, yeah. This is the Philtrix Foundation. We worked for them since 2013, and Pride Week, they did 252 gardens out of the center this year, and distributed to people in need in Lorraine County. And they get eight socks, they get a series of plants, they get a watering can, and they get the instruction book I've given you with a bunch of recipes in it, and how to care for their little garden. So we're not only...
It actually has been a very, very big success. We started that, I think we started working on that back in '8.
Yeah.
It's been a slug. We're putting a new loading dock in the back, so we could have more capability, and I see nothing but future expansion and use of the facility. As people become more aware of the things that they shouldn't be introducing into the environment that should be recycled and keeping it out of the landfill. And of course, we're still looking for a home for our organics facility.
Still looking.
That we need to do going forward. So that and the, we have to finish up the regional tire collection discussion down in Grafton, so that, a lot of tires come from the southern end of the community, and we need to have something available on the southern end that's more practical than what we have right now. We had those conversations, you agreed to do some of that work, but it's a bit off track right now, so I need to get that back on track, and we'll move forward.
Medina County will be bringing their policy committee here later this year. We'll let you know when that's going to happen, but they were here with their representatives in the month of July to look at the center, and they want to have some regional discussions with us. So that involves some Commissioners, I'm sure, so.
As I said, I've said it a few times, that I had a chance to experience the Collection Center firsthand through the process of moving and cleaning up and clearing out, and there is just no reason in the world for anybody to do that foolishness of dumping things in lots and woods and all that craziness that goes on. It certainly hurts our environment, and, you know, they'd be amazed when they look at the list of all the things that we actually take, so. But good work over there. Everybody was, you know, very professional, felt like I got through there in a timely manner, and works very well.
We did 13,900 cars last year, so that's where we're at last year. Hope to break to 15,000 in a year this year, so. All right?
Good, Keith. Probably will now with the paper, because those were just a two-year, twice a year activity. Now it's all the time.
We'll be bringing that forward with a scope of work to Mr. Cordezic, very near future.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Cordezic, I have not talked to you about this, because it just came up yesterday. I was talking to a couple of our veterans, and they are in a need of some space to house some medical equipment and other things. I don't know if the Collection Center would be a good place for that, or our warehouse, or if we have space available for them to...
I always have space for veterans, so the, I will figure it out, just give me the contact numbers. Now, are we talking about our veterans administrators here?
No.
What are we talking about?
We're talking about just, like, the post they try to keep on hand walkers and wheelchairs and beds and things for their veterans that they could hand, you know, give out, but they are running out of space, so. Joe G., Rosa G...
Have Joe give me a call.
Okay.
We'll figure something out. I just want to make sure that we're storing good equipment and not some things that are not in the best repair and they end up being abandoned onto us. We've tried to assist people before, only to find out we end up having to clean out a lot of things. But I'll work with them, I'll find something for them. The, remember, the collection center is only a small piece of everything that we're doing out at the Port Authority industrial complex. We also have dry cold storage with the City of Alaria. We have our transit maintenance garage there. We have built a new building, I call it a building within a building, but a workspace in the building so we can put those folks from Job Family Services that have a work requirement for their assistance to work. We have a company coming in and putting them to work in that building, too. So it's been a slow slug, but we're putting that huge area back as a working environment totally. Got a lot of our square footage now working over there from that building.
I took a look at the vet, too.
And as soon as the...
Coming along.
Yes, as soon as a big flea market sign is down and we get our new sign up there, I'll be really, really happy. I've been wanting to get that down for a while. So I think there's a little bit of space still in that building, we can work with them. I certainly would be pleased to do so.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Under developmental disabilities, approve an internal leasing agreement with Our Lady of the Wayside, Inc., in the amount of $1,525 per month for 144 Academy Court, Alaria, effective September 1st, 2016 through August 31st, 2018. This property will operate a community residential home for developmental disabled adults.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Under the engineer request, NOACA has placed safe routes to school infrastructure project, Alaria Township, on their transportation plan for future federal funds. Authorize engineering to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors' approvals to form. ODOT has approved and will provide up to $315,475 for this project in fiscal year '20 to construct sidewalks, curb ramps, crosswalks, improved signage, and paved trail in a heavily traveled corridor.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, and Alaria Township has paid their dues.
[laughing]
And as you can see, there's a benefit to being a member of NOACA. Interesting how that works.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Right.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Request NOACA to place DeGore Orphanage Road Bridge replacement on their transportation plan for future federal funds. Authorize engineering to execute on behalf of Board of Prosecutors' approvals to form. And this should say CEAO has approved federal LBR funds in the amount of $2,318,000. Local share with DMVGT or OPWC, which is $579,600, for a total project of $2,898,000 for fiscal year '22.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Consent with ODOT to perform a bridge replacement of the structure located on Valley Road, Township 137, over Palm Creek, Columbia Township, to begin construction 2017. No funds required from county except the county engineer agrees to assume and bear 100% of the total cost for added construction items requested by the county and not necessary for improvement as determined by state and federal highway administration.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
I have no further comment. I'll yield to council. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Commissioners, I have two updates on matters of pending litigation.
Commissioners, report.
Like I said, Wednesday, I went out to the collection center, took a quick tour and checked out the shred truck. Yesterday, we had our IAC meeting. It looks like we may be getting a slight increase in our investments, but the treasurer's not going to make that official until after October. Then last night, I went out to Sheffield Township, and they had their night out, and they had all the first responders there, the lifelike helicopter landed, and it was just a great, great activity for families to get involved in. Chad Parsons puts this on for free for all the residents. It's really nice, free hot dogs and stuff, and it was just a really, really nice event. And I just wanted to thank Chad for doing that for his community. Happy birthday to Cole, Ron's grandson, turned one years old. Had a big birthday party celebration for him on Saturday, the only day that it rained out of the last, like, six months. So, but the rain was much needed, so. The sheriff has a press release I want to let everybody know about. It's called Operation Street Smart. It's an adult drug education program. It's going to be on August 25th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. It will be at the Stocker Arts Center at the college on North Abbey Road, and there is no cost to attend. If you are interested in attending, contact Detective Olin Martin at 440-284-0615. I know there's a lot of people struggling with addiction issues, and if you want to get educated on the drug trends and terminology, paraphernalia and all that stuff, take a ride out there to the college on the 25th, so. End of my report.
Yeah. Busy week again. Congratulations to Chad Parsons and Sheffield Township, their 11th year, great turnout as always. On top of the Investment Advisory Committee, Commissioner Lundey and I attended a roundtable with the Secretary of Commerce and Senator Sherrod Brown at Local 1104, the Steelworkers' Hall on Tuesday, Monday?
Monday.
Monday, okay, Monday.
Monday.
Nice discussion points, talking about the dumping of steel and a lot of the steel workers who are going through the rapid response and stuff. As I spoke to our administrator, some glitches in how they're getting to the educational point with the Ohio Means jobs, so we're working to see where some of those are happening at. But such an influx of those who are hurting and in need, just devastating to our community with the dumping of steel. Also, congratulations City of Lorraine. Got an opportunity Saturday evening, ran downtown Lorraine. Lorraine had hosted the Rover Fest, again, 15,000 to 20,000 people. The Back of the Palace had a very good night there, serving drinks and such like that. Was a really nice crowd, looks like they didn't have any problems. Five or six arrests, so I mean, for that amount of people, again, congratulations to Lorraine, Lorraine Police and all the other safety forces who worked there. Looked like another great event at Black River Landing.
Nice.
You didn't do any...
Did a really great job down there.
Well, the Rockin' Down the River got named the number-one music venue on the Great Lakes, apparently. The Lake Area Magazine or something had that. I saw also on a Facebook post, so it's really starting to do something downtown there.
We just got to get some other tertiary things for people to visit when they're down there.
Correct.
Yeah, somebody had a drone shot overhead, and that was just amazing.
Yeah, I think did that, didn't he?
Yeah.
It was just cool to watch that drone move and spin around, and, I mean, it was all over. And we watched the guy put it away, and he folds into a box about this big. And it probably had a 10-foot wingspan. Took it all apart, snapped it down, put it in a box, and watched him put it away and walk away.
Yeah, amazing, amazing.
It was amazing. End of my report.
Lot of exciting things going on in the rain down on the riverfront and up near the lakefront. Want to congratulate Alaria Main Street for a successful steak fry. I wasn't able to attend, had to be out of town, but I understand it went very well. Also, having the opportunity to attend that roundtable discussion with the steelworkers in Lorraine, and really want to thank U.S. Senator Sherrod Brown for bringing in Commerce Secretary Penny Pritzker. Well, I got to tell you, she walked in the room, she had all kinds of security with her and everything else, and those are the days and times we live in these days. But obviously, she's been working hard as she can to crack down on China and others, and everybody talks about free trade, but I don't think there's really any such thing as free trade. I think you have to have regulated trade to make sure that everybody's playing by the rules. And obviously, with a lot of countries not playing by the rules, Lorraine and this country are greatly suffering, no question about it. But Congresswoman Caffetter was there as well, too. Always good to see her. Can't thank her enough for saving all those fire jobs in Lorraine and really stepping up and helping out. But it was a very candid and good conversation that needed to be had. And also, congratulations to everyone over there in Sheffield Township. Enjoyed the free hot dogs and chips and great company over there and a really nice event, and it just shows the good things you can accomplish when the communities come together and work together. So that completes my report.
Board correspondents?
I would move that we approve the board correspondence and waive the reading.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?